I'd like to call the meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Ms. Preciado to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please raise your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
You know, I've noticed over the 29 years I've been on the board, when you ask somebody to lead Legion or Pledge of Allegiance, their personality comes out. She's got her own little style. I like that. 1.3, approval of the agenda. Move to second. Any changes to agenda? Seeing none. Vote, please. Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Rosa Bloom.
Aye.
Motion passed. Section 2, 2.1. Receive public comments. Are there any public comments, Ms. Cunningham?
There is not.
All right. And then I will not read this message. We'll go to section 3, Public Hearing. 3.1, Adoption of the 2025, 2026, and 2026, 2027 Traditional School Calendars. At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Are there any questions or comments about the calendars? All right, seeing none.
There are no comments.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. And now I will enter, I will entertain a motion.
It's moved.
It was moved by Ms. Sabios, seconded by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
Ms. Rosa Bloom.
Aye.
The motion passed. 3.2, Initial Reopener Proposal from the California School Board Association.
There are no comments.
Open the public hearing. Any comments from board members? Questions? We'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion. Moved by Dr. Wyatt and seconded by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please. Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Rosa Bloom.
Aye.
Motion carried. Section 4, 4.1, Closed Session, Public Comments. Are there any Closed Session public comments?
There are none.
The board will adjourn to Closed Session. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Section 5, Action Reported from Closed Session, 5.1, Approval of Coordinator, Multi-Lingual Programs Department, Kindergarten through Sixth Grade. A move.
Second.
Be resolved, Board Education, approve the appointment of the following employee: Victor Mendoza, Coordinator of Multi-Lingual Programs Department, Case Six Effective Date, Work Year, and Skill Level Determined, Funding Seven Eight Zero. Is moved by Dr. Wyatt and seconded by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please.
Ms. Grande.
Motion carried. All right, board, we are excited about Victor Mendoza returning us, returning to us by way of Colton Unified. Grow Our Own in every sense of the word, started here back in 2001. Community Resource Worker, made his way up to Teacher, Vice Principal, Principal, now returning to us as Coordinator. Well-versed in everything elf, dual, dual teacher, working with our Hispanic Latino community, and everything in between. Board, I introduce to you Mr. Victor Mendoza.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me? Good evening. I wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to return. Like Dr. Pancha said, I started my career here in San Bernardino at 21 years old. I was a community liaison, and then I was encouraged to teach. I became a teacher. I taught Kinder through Sixth Grade, then I became an administrator. And due to life circumstances, I had to leave and seek employment elsewhere. But wherever I went, I carried San Bernardino with me. There was numerous times up until recently that I would always say, we did this in San Bernardino. I learned this in San Bernardino. So I always carried San Bernardino in my heart. And, and I thank you because without the experiences that I had here, or because of the experiences that I had here, I was able to help other districts and other communities. But I always had the heart to return back to San Bernardino. And, and now at the position of Coordinator, I know I can assist our community better. And so again, I wanted to say thank you, and you know, thank God for bringing me here to you and for you guys to give me the opportunity. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, and welcome home. 5.2, Approval of Elementary School Vice Principal.
Second.
Be resolved, Board Education, approve the appointment of the following employee: Stephanie Lopez, Elementary School Vice Principal, School Side Effective Date, Work Year, and Skill Level Determined. It's been moved by Mr. Husky and seconded by Mrs. Alexander. Vote, please. Motion passed.
All right, board, another Grow Our Own story of dedication, commitment, perseverance. From Instructional Aid back in 1999 at Hunt Elementary, worked her way up to Teacher, from Guest Teacher, to Middle School Teacher and Program Facilitator at Rio Vista Elementary since 2018. We are excited about her leadership, has worked across the table with me in negotiations with the district SBTA. Welcome Stephanie Lopez.
All right, good afternoon. President Tillman, Vice President Sabios, Superintendent Ariano, Board and Cabinet. I'm very excited, I'm very nervous as well, but I'm very excited to continue growing in my leadership. Like Dr. Pancha said, I did have many opportunities to have leadership roles in my teaching career, and I think this is the next step with the support of very good admin and other coworkers that have pushed me. I'm ready to take this next step. I'm ready to make sure that our schools, whichever school that I go to, has a safe, caring learning environment. And I'm all on board, and I'm, I actually went to school in San Bernardino. So I started at Mount Vernon Elementary, went to Parkside, went to Richardson, and then graduated from San Bernardino High School. So yeah, 100% San Bernardino. So I'm very excited for this opportunity to keep on growing and learning. And I'm excited to support others in growing and their leadership as well. So thank you very, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations, and welcome aboard. 5.3, District Claim. The claim, be resolved, Board Education, approve settlement authorization for District Claim Number 202425001 in an amount of $250,000. Entertain a motion, please. A move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt and seconded by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please. The motion carried. 5.4, Lit, Readmit of Expulsion of Student. Be resolved, Board Education, authorize the readmission of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City and High School District in accordance with the Board Rules and Regulations and in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900. Second. Moved by Mr. Husky, seconded by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Motion carried. 5.5, Petition to Expel, Rescind, Saling Record, or Modify Youth Court or Expulsion. Be resolved, Board Education, authorize the expulsion and/or youth court modification, expulsion, or rescinding of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City and High School District in accordance with the Board Rules and Regulations and compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
It's moved.
Moved by Ms. Sabios and seconded by Mr. Husky. Vote, please. Motion carried. Section 6, Administrative Report and Presentation, 6.1, Annual Report of Charter Schools 2022, 2023.
Thank you, President Tillman. At this time, I would go ahead and pass it over to my Director of Charter Schools, Ms. Ernestine Hopwood.
Oh, good evening. My name is Ernestine Hopwood. I'd like to say good evening to all and especially our newest members of the board. Welcome aboard. My name is Ernestine Hopwood. I am the Director of Charter School Operations. I have been in the district for 28 years now. I started as a teacher at Ramona Alessandra with Ted Alejandro, who's our County Superintendent. And I'm proud to say that it's all his fault. He groomed me to go into administration at a very early age. And so I was, had the opportunity to be a Vice Principal and a Principal for 18 years in the district. So I moved around to several elementary schools. And then I finished my career at the school site at Chavez Middle School. I was there for five years before being granted this position. So I've been overseeing charters now for five years. And we have been a little sleepy for the last three or four years since COVID. When COVID hit, all of our renewals went on pause. And so now we're starting to gear up for renewals, and that's why I brought with me today Ms. Sukie Alawala. She's our attorney from AALRR, who will be navigating that process with us. And she'll be saying a few words about the renewal process and introducing herself in just a minute. So very quickly, there were two attachments to today's board agenda. One was bullet points on the annual report, and the second one was a 12-page report, one for each of the charter schools. In that information, you've also received from Karen a little PowerPoint presentation that kind of walks you through each of those pieces. I believe that most of you may have seen this report last year. So it's kind of just an update of information for each of the areas. I'm here to tell you that we have nothing major going on in the charter world. So you'll notice that every, every one of the charters provided a highlight that they wanted to share with you. There's also a financial snapshot, and every single one of our charters received a positive certification. In the enrollment area, it speaks to the last three years of attendance and suspension. And in addition to the enrollment, you also have a breakdown of the subgroups. In the, in the audit report, they are audited, and then we get the audit report. And our staff looks over that and asks any follow-up questions. And all of those have been submitted by Mr. Cunningham's office. And then in our special education area, as of this report in 2223, we did have two charters that were receiving a full battery of services from our Special Education Department. They were paying full fees. This last year, Ballington has selected to exit our services. And so we will now just have one of our charters that will receive full services, and that's Woodward. So you'll also see exactly who is the CELPA for each of those individual charters on the annual reports. And then we provided some data for you directly from the California Department of Education on the dashboard report. And so that information is there for you in addition to the English Language Proficiency Report. So really, this is just like for your information, a bulk of, of facts, most of which have been, and I believe there's a little asterisk in each box which speaks to where did we get this information? Because we really wanted you to know that this wasn't just information that we fabricated, but rather information directly from the California Department of Education. And that concludes the presentation of the information before you. I'd now like to hand the mic over to our attorney, Sukie, so that she may introduce herself and talk to you a little bit about the renewal process.
Good evening, everyone. It's so great to see the familiar faces, and it's so great to see those that I haven't met before. It's been a while since you've seen me, and you're probably thinking that was great. But we're going to be seeing a little bit more of me in the upcoming year. We have three charters that are coming up for renewal. It's Woodward, Entrepreneur High School, and Public Safety Academy. The Charter Schools Act was substantially revised in 2020. And so those of us who have gone through the charter renewal process, you're going to be something, seeing some things that look the same, but there are a significant number of changes as well. So when we are working with the charters in having them submit their petitions, we'll be going through those legislative changes to make sure that when it gets to the board, all of those things have been addressed. In terms of the timing, we're working with the three that are going to be coming up so that we stagger them a little bit. And primarily, the purpose for doing that is to ensure that the board is able to look at each and every one and weigh it on its own merits. When the charter petitions are received, you'll have 60 days to conduct a public hearing on each charter. And then the decision is made within 90 days unless we have an extension. So each of these charters, like I said, we're going to be working with them to go over many of the legislative changes, and there were a lot of them. In fact, Ernestine and I were just talking about the manner in which we're going to be requesting the information. We're going to ask for most of it to be redlined so that we can easily access it and provide the updates to the board. So I am available to respond to any questions that the board might have about the renewal process. But we'll be coming to you probably starting in September, like I said, for those three. And then the cycle will continue for the next couple of years as each of the other ones come up for renewal. Okay. Well, and I just wanted to say thank you again for letting me introduce myself. It's been a while since you've seen me, and also I'm just happy to spend my birthday with you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Yes, thank you so much. I'm sorry. Oh, well, Ernestine got me a cake pop, so I'm good. Thanks again.
And Mr., President Tillman, if I may, we will be reactivating our charter committee so that we know that you want to know, of course, about the changes. So before any of that takes place, we'll be meeting with our charter subcommittee as well.
Thank you. And if there aren't any questions, I want to say thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to present this information.
Thank you very much. Section 7, Student Board Members, 7.1, Reports and Comments from Student Board Members. Start with Ms. Ochoa.
Hello. I hope everyone has been having a wonderful summer, and the weather has been bearable. California, yay. But I would like to say that for some new summer updates for Cajon High School, Monday, July 29th is going to be freshman orientation from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. So for all incoming freshmen, I know Link Crew usually has an event where they really try to get Cajon's kids to like, get to know the campus a little bit better with their schedules and everything like that. And then Monday, July 29th is the freshman parent orientation for that. And then Monday, August 5th, the first day of school. We're so excited, so exciting. I'm personally excited to start my senior year, and then August 22nd is the back-to-school night. And then senior information is September 5th. That's all the information that they've given to us for the beginning of the school year that's starting. And I would like to just add a few notes as that Cajon's new principal is very excited to be fulfilling his first full year of Cajon, and I know that we're very excited to have him as well. Senior photos have been taken, and that's what they're, they've been doing these weeks leading up to our first day of school. So if you guys want a photo of me, feel free to email me. The SBCUSD Back-to-School Extravaganza is something that I really think should be promoted as much as possible because I know my, it's helped my family in the past as well with all the supplies and the information that they offer for the beginning of the year. So that's really wonderful. And that's happening Wednesday, July 24th at the San Bernardino Valley College, 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. And that's open to all SBCUSD students. So besides that, very excited to start my senior year and be able to represent Cajon and everything that's wonderful that's happening there. I know that the track and cross-country team at Cajon is already starting their prep, as well as other sports team are already getting ready for that summer conditioning, as well as our wrestling team. And just newly turned 17, so very excited for the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa. Ms. Preciado.
Good evening, everyone. So before I do my report, I just want to quickly recap on my pilot year. So reflecting on my first term of being a student board member, it fills me with a lot of sense of accomplishment and anticipation for what lies ahead. I actively participated in decision-making processes that directly impacted students' lives, advocated for campuses' improvements, and promoted students' wellbeing. Now, looking ahead, I'm excited to expand my knowledge and achievements by enhancing diversity in student representation, fostering campus security, and amplifying student voices through attentive leadership. I'm so committed to refine my skills and serving not only San Gregonio High School, but San Andreas High School. I am beyond grateful for another opportunity that I will be given. Now, as in for updates, we have Link Crew and ASB joining to do the freshman orientation at Sanji Friday the 26th, and then we have the parent orientation. And then we have the senior photos. So that's kind of just the update for right now. So yeah, I'm looking forward to making hope happen for this next upcoming year.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rosa Bloom.
Um, good evening. I would like to start off with, I would like to start my senior year to recognize the construction workers for their very hard work at Pacific. Because I, as I'm coming along, I get to see improvement, and I get to see what like, our new freshmen, our new freshmen coming in, what they get to experience as they become new seniors, juniors, and sophomores. So I would like to give a recognition to the, to the construction workers and their hard work because they, they don't, they don't have, they just deal with us as an everyday basis because they work while we're in school, and they deal with what we have to deal with. So yeah, I would like to give a recognition to the construction workers.
Thank you very much. Section 8, Action Items, 8.1, Personal Report, As Presented. Move. Moved by Dr. Wyatt and seconded by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please. Motion carried. 8.2, Arts and Music in Schools Funding Annual Report, Fiscal Year 2023, 2024. Be resolved, Board Education, approve the Arts and Music in Schools Funding reported as presented.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Alexander, seconded by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Rosa Bloom.
Aye.
Motion carried. Basis to 8.3, Resolution and Grant Application to the California Energy Commission.
It's moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Alexander and seconded by Mrs. Grande. Vote, please. Is that right? Seconded by Ms. Medina. Sorry about that. Ms. Grande doing a little puppet thing down there.
Dr. Wyatt.
Motion carried. 8.4, Resolution of Intention of the Board Education of San Bernardino City and High School District to Establish Community Facilities District Number 2024-1 of the San Bernardino City and High School District, and to Authorize the Levy of Special Taxes Within Community Facilities District Number 2024-1 of the San Bernardino City and High School District. Entertain a motion. Moved by Ms. Alexander. And seconded by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Ms. Ochoa. Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Motion carried, 8.5, resolution of intention of the Board of Education of the San Bernardino Cityified School District to incur bonded indebtedness in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $13,500,000 with their proposed community facilities, district number 2024-1 of the San Bernardino Cityified School District. Motion, please.
I'm moved.
Moved by Ms. Sabios.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Medina. Vote, please.
Ms. Sabios. It's not popping, popping up on my screen, but I...
Motion carried, 8.6, resolution of the Board of Education of the San Bernardino Cityified School District approving and ordering the recording of a boundary map of proposed community facilities, district number 2024-1 of the San Bernardino Cityified School District.
I'm moved.
Removed by Ms. Medina.
I can't.
Seconded by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
Motion carried. Section nine, consent items, 9.1, approval consent items. I move. Moved by Dr. Wyatt, seconded by Ms. Chahusky. Can I, are there any two we pull? Seeing none. Vote, please. Motion carried, section 10, reports, comments by union organizations, 10.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
No report.
10.2, California School Employees Association.
No report.
10.3, Communications Workers of America.
No report.
10.4, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
No report.
Section 11, mandated policy revisions, adoption of board bylaw 9220, governing board elections. Any motion, please.
I'm moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Sabios, seconded by Dr. Wyatt. Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Ms. Sabios.
Motion carried, 11.2, adoption of bylaw exhibit 9220, governing board elections.
I'm moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Alexander, seconded by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Motion carried. 11.3, deletion of board bylaw 9221, recruiting new board members.
I'm moved.
Moved by Ms. Medina.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please. Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Motion carried, 11.4, adoption of board bylaw 9222, resignation.
I'm moved.
Moved by Ms. Medina.
I can't.
Seconded by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please. Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Ms. Medina.
Motion carried, 11.5, adoption of board bylaw 9223, filling vacancies.
I'm moved.
Moved by Ms. Medina. Seconded by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please. Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
Ms. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Motion carried, 11.11, adoption of bylaw exhibit 9323.2, actions by the board. So move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt and seconded by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
And Ms. Rosenblum.
Aye.
Motion carried. Section 12, reports and comments, 12.1, reports by board members. I'll start with Mrs. Alexander.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Happy summer, and I'm excited, but it's not even 7 o'clock, and I'm able to give my board comments first and foremost. My updates, this past weekend, or 4th of July weekend, many of us attended the 4th of July celebration for the symphony. I won't steal Dr. Wyatt's thunder, I'll just share that I attended, and it was entitled "The Wizard of Oz," and it was focused on also our military, but it was a really nice event outdoors at Valley College, by the San Bernardino Symphony, and a really nice family engagement event. My family and I have been going, I think this is our third year. So I'll let Dr. Wyatt share his ideas and what he thought, but I thought it was awesome, and I just want to encourage everybody to go. It's a really good event. And then, congratulations to all the graduates. We were able to attend the superintendent's graduation, and the greatest part of it all is the fact that all the high schools' seniors that graduated this summer were in attendance together in collective community, and I thought that was really special. And it was just special to be there, to be able to witness them across the stage. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Medina.
I wasn't able to attend the summer graduation, but I know the superintendent's summer graduation, but I know that the students worked really hard and had that second chance, so I just want to say congratulations to all our graduates that just, you know, for the summer program, as well as the ones that graduated in, in May. And then, of course, I do want to acknowledge that Mr. Ariano's, Superintendent Ariano's birthday is... So I just want to wish him, you know, many, many birthdays to come.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Ms. Grande.
I too attended the summer graduation, and I, I just get so excited. I, I, you know, I, you know the story, I was a high school dropout and didn't get chances like that. And actually, I had a, I think, family that did that summer graduation, so it's a big deal, and, and they shoot really high up after that. It's like they, they could have just easily have just dropped out, and so that took a lot of courage to keep going. It must have been really hard for some of them, so God bless them all. And also, you know, we're starting a new year, and I hate to sound like a squeaky wheel, but here goes, okay? Mr. Tillman, you gave me a name and recommended someone to go to about the subacute, and I just want to prepare to have the ask ready before I actually contact her, because I don't know if she's going to want a meeting, or she wants it over the phone, or she wants to hear about the subacute. So I seek permission, direction, or advice now on making an appointment with subacute administrator or hospital administrator to discuss the following: a partnership, collaboration, or project design for our students and their educational environment in the subacute to possibly include, to include a remodel of the kitchen area, which has been abandoned for several years, currently still unused, and currently, just to end it, we have no MOU with them, it's been expired now for several years. So it's, and then when you read it, even when you read the expired one, it was all one-way. We, we don't get anything other than permission to go in and visit the children. And anywhere we have a student, that's our student, and we are, they're given an hour a day, each student, and, and to count for, not their educational purposes, but so that gives them, we count that as ADA. So we have their money for attending school because they have a teacher going in and seeing them for an hour, and we stand there with no chairs or tables or anything all of our other teachers in our school districts have access to. So again, I'm going to put that forth and keep, keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sabios.
Thank you so much. As, as Ms. Alexander had said, it's not even 7:00. Quite nice, actually. I just want to start off by saying, congratulations to District Police Officer Brett Hoddle. I know you guys celebrated him last board meeting. Unfortunately, I was not here, but I did want to make sure, I was not here, but I was watching. So I celebrated from a distance, and then also to the board members, student board members that were sworn in, I see that we got a few new ones. Again, I wasn't here, but I was watching as you all were getting sworn in, so really super excited to have our returning school board members come back, and then I can't wait to meet some of our new ones. Also, congratulations to the graduates that graduated this, this summer. I also was not able to attend, but I know we were well represented, and, and as always, super, super proud of just all of their accomplishments. It's, it's really, truly an accomplishment to graduate high school. I also want, speaking of graduations, send a special shout-out to my brother. He graduated from the Police Academy over at Valley College, and I was there this, this month as well, and so congratulations to him. Also, I want to say thank you to Dr. Rodriguez for having us over at the training that was happening by her division. It was really, really quite a pleasure to be there and just really be able to share a little bit of, just share with them and share about our passions for, for the division and kind of, you know, collaborate and get to hear from them, you know, what is it that they seek from, from us as a board, and then also be able to extend ourselves to them as well, and just letting them, really opening up and just letting them know, you know, we're here to support and, and we're, we're in this together. So thank you so much for that invitation, and also today earlier, I was able to attend with Mr. Ariano, the, a tour to the Carpenter's Training Center, quite, quite, quite nice center. Again, the, the part, the, the potential partnerships and the possibilities. I know that last board member, our other, you know, union, IBW, were also here, you know, during public comment, and I really do, do look forward to expanding and, and really just, you know, continuing to build on those, on those partnerships for the betterment of our students. And I will be, I have some things in my schedule this week and next week, so I'll try to stop by to some of the things that I was invited to, so hopefully I get to see some of, some of our district staff and employees there as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to build a little bit upon what Ms. Alexander was talking about in regards to the 4th of July celebration by the San Bernardino Symphony, first of all, amazing, amazing performance by our local symphony. It was just outstanding, and it was my first time attending, and I didn't know I'd get such an amazing show in a couple of different ways. First, you know, our symphony has just played many, many different amazing pieces, and then the fireworks show, of course, was a bonus, but, you know, I was able to talk with our folks, our partners from San Bernardino Valley College, as well as the symphony, and we were wondering, you know, could we support that program, obviously in a sponsorship, but how could we also use it as an incentive or make it an incentive for our students and families to attend? You know, when I was there, I was thinking about creating traditions, and I think if our young families and students were able to attend that, that it could be something they would maybe want to attend for many years to come. So it really wasn't, I mean, it was a very reasonable event for the cost. It was only 10 bucks to attend. So I mean, to be able to attend a fireworks show alone, let alone an amazing concert provided by a symphony, I mean, you're not going to find a better deal around, number one. But I think we were able to sponsor them and then create some sort of incentive for our students to, you know, want to attend, that we can help build this community and help build pride in our communities. So that was my goal. That was what I was hoping for and, and talking to, you know, our chancellor from Valley College, as well as our new president over there, and I apologize, I can't remember his name, but it looks like they're building an amazing team. And we talked about our partnership as well with San Bernardino Cityified School District, Middle College High, doing enrollment, and just, you know, it's another way we can continue to collaborate with our local community, and then to roll over into the Southwest Carpenter's Union Training Facility. I was really excited that Ms. Sabios and Superintendent Ariano, as well as Dr. Ben Kattesson and Dr. Kay, were able to attend, and, you know, it's something that I've been working with them on for many years, and I wanted us to be able to see the quality of training that our students can receive. And it's not just the quality of training, but also the amazing career that they can have. We talk all the time about college and career readiness, and that is exactly what we mean about career readiness. And I was fortunate, Ms. Sabios mentioned the Electrical Union, and IBW was here again this evening, 477, Mr. Ben Pratt, and I asked him, well, do you have a facility, right? He said, we sure as heck do. He never told me that in any conversation, so I think we'll be painted a trip over there soon. They're local, right here in San Bernardino, right off of Hospitality Lane, so he said it's an unbelievable training facility, so I think we've had the bar set high for the expectations of our students and the type of training they can receive, not just while they're here, but as soon as they leave San Bernardino Cityified School District. So I think exciting times, really exciting times, and every time I think about apprenticeships and internships, I also think about my, my friend and colleague, Mike Gallo. You know, I know that was a big dream of his, and I want to continue to pursue that, that dream for him. I know how much it meant to him, and I know how much it means to many of us. Summer graduation, yeah, that was a hit. That's always one of my favorites because it's almost every school, high school in the district, so that's a lot of fun. We had some adult graduates there, too. They didn't say they were adults, but if they weren't adults, they're the oldest-looking 18-year-old I've ever seen. No, I'm just kidding. But they were, they were probably some of the most excited students crossing the stage. And they were right next to me. I was like, a couple of those dudes just wanted to not give us big hugs, not let go, and I'm like, wow! You know, but it was, it was great to see our, our adult high school graduates, you know, that persistence and that resiliency of not giving up, right? And just continuing with their education, and then, wow, maybe we can transition them over to IBW or Southwest Carpenter Union, so here's another opportunity for you to continue to build on that and build your career. But the, the young man who sung at the summer graduate, I know, maybe wrong, you know the name of the student, I apologize, I don't know his name, but, what was it? Okay, that was a mouthful. Tristan? Tristan? All right, he, I tell you what, I've heard a lot of National Anthems. That was by far one of the best I've ever seen. So Tristan, if you're out there, amazing job. I'm sure your mom, dad, or family are proud, but wow, he, he brought down the house. So great job to our staff as well, ending our school year on an amazing note. And here we go, starting the new year today. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Ms. Chusky?
Thank you. Six fifty-eight, so I'll be the bridge into the seven o'clock hour. First, I also wanted to talk about summer graduation. You know, we talk about resilience and, and the ability of our kids to overcome and to continue to pursue all the way to their high school graduation. And, you know, this, this class, twenty twenty-four, whether they were in one of our, during the school year graduations or the summer graduation, this class is special because this is the class that began high school during the pandemic. And, you know, the, the challenges that they had, and some of these kids may have fallen behind before they even got a chance to step foot on campus. So my kudos to each and every one of them, to all of our graduates this year. Because I know that you had a little something extra to push through to, to get to graduation. And so my hats off to the class of twenty twenty-four. I also wanted to recognize Tristan on the National Anthem because I couldn't help but do the contrast between the National Anthem at the Home Run Derby versus what we experienced. And I'm really blessed that we have such quality youngsters that can just belt it out right here in San Bernardino. If you're looking for, you know, Major League Baseball, if you're looking for a National Anthem singer, we got, we got several of them here that can, that can hit it out of the park. To our folks in, our labor folks, IBW, I'm sorry, I didn't get to go to the Carpenter's Union. I'm excited for the partnerships that we're having, you know, with, across labor. IBW is going to be having a career day and I'm sorry, I don't, I thought I had, I had gotten the flyer or like a open house thing that for our students. And I talked to Dr. Rodriguez about, you know, maybe being able to get some of our kids there. So I'm going to reach back out to, to, to Mr. Pratt and, and to the other gentleman that said he was going to send me the flyer to make sure that we get that so that we can get there. And, yeah, the facility is right there on Commerce Center, right next to their offices. So it's unassuming. Like, when I found out that was where their building was, I was kind of surprised. I also want to thank Dr. Rodriguez for the invitation to the Student Services Retreat. We just have some amazing people that work in our district. And, and, you know, every time I, I talk to our folks or I experience it, you know, I'm just really proud of what we have here. I was proud of the work that they were doing that day, the conversations that they were having about their goals for the, for the year, the conversations that they had with us and, and trying to understand, you know, what it is that, that the board is seeking. And, you know, we really tried to make sure that they understood our support for our departments, for our, our cabinet, our assistant superintendents, and the directors that they work with, and, and for all of our employees. So that was, was pretty exciting. I, I wanted to let you all know and remind you and hope that you will come to the Student Board Member Board Orientation. You should have an invitation for the lunch, the lunchtime to come and meet all of our new board members. We minimized your time this year because we knew it was really difficult for you guys to schedule in time to come. But we would still like to give you an opportunity to meet all of our new student board members and interact with them. So it'll be here. It's August first and second, and the lunch is on the first day? The second day. It's on August second. Sorry, it's on August second. And so you should, you should, if you haven't received an invitation, you will be receiving the invitation. And, and we have some special things planned so that we can get to know each other. I think it is at noon? Noon? Yeah, I think it's at noon. For you guys. We'll be all day. I'll be, we'll be all day with them. And I just want to thank the board for your support and, and trust in me to help us. This is year two, to help us get this off the ground. You know, I, I can't tell you, I mean, these guys can tell you the kudos that they keep getting and that we're getting. And we're getting ready to put in, they're putting in, we're putting together a proposal because we were asked by CSBA to do so, for our kids to present at AEC. So they will be, hopefully, it'll, their presentation will get accepted since they were asked to submit. And they'll be presenting on what, the work that we do in student leadership here in San Bernardino and our student board program. So we're very excited about that. And then last, I'd like to say, you know, I'm also, when I'm talking about appreciation, I appreciate how this board works together. There are so many district and community events. It's not possible for any one of us to get to everything. And I appreciate the way that we work together and try to, to, you know, tag team through Karen, our attendance. So that we try to get at least one of us to everything. But, you know, sometimes it's just not possible. Sometimes there's so many things on one day. It's, it's crazy. But, you know, I just want to say I appreciate the teamwork they do and, and also to say, you know, I hope you understand that we do try to get everywhere. But sometimes it's just not physically possible to be in eight places at once. So thank you.
Ms. Sabios and then Dr. Wyatt.
I, thank you so much. I had forgotten to mention that I was over at sixty-six, Sixty-Sixer Stadium with employee, the employee night that they had over there. And Ms. Goodwin had me and Mr. Koenig throw the first pitch over there. So I hope I did make you all proud. That was, that was it. I don't know. I got to the catcher, okay? No, but thank you for the invitation and thank you for your team. It was awesome. They did a really good job.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
Mr. President, I do apologize. I, I know we, we need to ask for consensus if we want to look at sponsoring an item, I believe, before we could even put it on the agenda to discuss. And I was going to ask the board for consensus, at least place it on an agenda for discussion for the symphony in Fourth of July extravaganza.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
So what, agendized discussion for working out some type of sponsorship with the symphony or actually participation in getting kids to actually attend and maybe families. Sounds good. All right, Mr. Ariano?
Thank you, President Tillman. First of all, I'm hoping all of our employees who are on summer break are enjoying their time and with their families and friends and getting recharged for a new school year. It's going to be another great school year. I want to thank our, our student board members who could be at home in the pool or, or, you know, doing something other than being here. But you being here today says a lot about the three of you. So thank you for being here and we're very excited to have you for a second year. And it's been very exciting for all of us to see you grow in your leadership. And I love hearing your aspirations for the year. So looking forward to, to your positive impact. I also want to give a shout out to all of our MNO employees and our school custodians who this summer, in the hot, hot sun and, and the humidity, are out there deep cleaning our campuses, refreshing all our landscaping, pressure washing all the gum off the cement, just a lot of hard work. And so I just want to acknowledge them and thank them for all of their work. And then our school police who over the summer are out patrolling our campuses to make sure that there's no mischief. Big thank and shout out to our school police force for making sure that our buildings and facilities are safe. Before I get into my PowerPoint, you can go and put that up there. But the board, I'm really excited to let you know that this week I will be meeting with Acting City Manager for the city of San Bernardino, Rochelle Clayton. And we're very excited about starting those conversations between the school district and the city. The city knows very well that we have put together a multi-year vision, not just for the benefit of the school district, but to benefit our community as a whole. So I'm very excited about that first conversation. And that is going to lead to, I believe, a lot more productive conversations to help elevate our city. So I'm looking forward to meeting Rochelle on Thursday. So I wanted to highlight just a few things today. First of all, just a big shout out again to the Pure Land Foundation and their mobile food pantry in, in Michael's side. These are pictures from the last food event where they gave out food to disadvantaged families. Over a thousand families or people were there. This was at Pacific High School, huge operation. And I want to let everyone know that the next one is coming up at a Royal High School on July twentieth. And why this is important, not only for the obvious, but remember, we made a commitment in our multi-year vision that student success can be bolstered through collaboration with community partners. And this is one example of how we bolster our students through partnerships. So I want to thank Pure Land for their continued love and genuine care for our community. It's making a big difference. Next slide, please. And then this is a picture of our Explorer Academy graduation. Is that, is that correct, chief? Did I say that correctly? So I want to thank Chief Joe Paulino and Assistant Chief Stephen Donahue for this program. Our cadets are, hopefully, what we're doing is we're building our future San Bernardino City Unified School District Police Officers moving forward. So this is a great program. The little picture in the middle is all the cadets and you see some of the proud graduates there. So thank you, chief, for your vision on this years ago. It's, it's making a difference and we're excited for our kids and thank you for that pipeline. Next slide, please. And as was mentioned, last year I did not get to attend the Super Ten Summer Graduation because it happened to fall on the week that we already had our vacation planned. So this was my first interaction with the summer graduation and I agree with all the comments. It was a very special moment. And to see the graduates come across where they knew they had to give a little extra to get to the finish line, they were so very happy to shake our hands and hug us and just smile. So I want to give a big shout out to Suda Vakattison, Anna Applegate, and everyone in your department for all the effort that went through. That graduation was no different than the ones we have at the school sites. And, and I really applaud you for that. It's, it's the same experience, same excitement. And so thank you for that. And Tristan, yeah, it, that was an amazing rendition of our National Anthem. And I want to give kudos also to Mickey Chusky on a great speech. And I want to thank Assemblyman James Ramos for being present, doing a land acknowledgement, but also his motivational speech about kids feeling proud about who they are, where they're from, and coming back into the community, doing good. So thank you to everybody who was involved in that. And congratulations to those graduates once again. Next slide. And then what was mentioned today, and I want to kind of elaborate. We had the opportunity to be at that Western States Carpenter's Training Facility in Ontario. And what we learned today, what we were trying to learn is how can we get our students who are in our manufacturing or in our construction-type academies going into these programs? And so that conversation ended with, we can do it. It can be done. And so we will be working on an MOU and seeing how Alan in his department and Chelsea in the Career Tech Department, how we can make a smooth transition of students going from our program into their internship programs. And to get an idea of what they have there, this is a huge facility. So they are literally teaching people how to build rooms and ceilings and welding and drywalling and cabinet making and concrete laying, build, bridge building, flooring, et cetera. These are jobs that can get up to a hundred thousand dollars right out of high school if they get into these internship programs. So we're very excited about building this relationship. So I want to thank Omar and Jeffrey from the Western States Carpenter's Facility in giving us the invite. We are going to be working hard to make this happen because we know this is also one of the goals that our multi-year vision is getting kids into jobs right out of high school that is a livable wage and something they continue to grow. And most importantly, what I told Omar and Jeffrey, this is about building San Bernardino, the city of San Bernardino again, having our kids be the ones that rebuild the city because we're giving them the skills they need, which will help our city elevate if they plant roots here and help with the development and redevelopment of the city. So this was a very exciting trip. So thank you very much, everybody, and wishing everybody a good rest of the evening.
One of the items shouldn't be lost about union jobs, they have real good retirement systems. And they have defined retirement plans, which are hard to find right now. And as someone who's been retired for almost two years, how much money you make retire makes a big difference. And, and money makes me happy. So I know I'm different than most people, but that brings us to section thirteen, review, request.
Good evening. Today we have one request from Dr. Wyatt. Dr. Wyatt requested consensus to agendize discussion for sponsoring the annual San Bernardino Symphony Fourth of July event at the Valley College and provide an incentive to our students and families to attend. Consensus was given. Thank you.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Begin adjourn.